This time I'll call Roland. Alden Jacomelli.
Here.
Alden Nash.
Here.
Alden Powell.
Here.
Alden Whitaker.
Here.
Mayor's here. Interim City Administrator, Ray Walden.
Here.
City Clerk, Mary Havill.
Here.
City Attorney, William Campsey.
Present.
Chief Police, Keith Steelman.
Present.
Superintendent, Gary Glenn.
Here.
Parking and Rec. Director, Greg Nash.
Here.
Code Officer, Jared Brown.
Here.
All present and accounted for. We have no hearing of persons tonight, so at this time, my agenda says a public hearing for the conditional use permit for Dos Road. We had a public hearing during planning and zoning. Should we continue to have another one at this time?
If there's anyone who wants to, if it wasn't present to the other, if they'd like to object at this time, they can speak up.
Okay, I will allow anyone that was not here during our planning and zoning meeting that would like to speak up in opposition to the conditional use permit for 1600 Dos Road, I'll give you a chance to speak at this time. Hearing done. Continue on. Let's consent agenda and try to bet, just go through the bills that's just been handed to you and looked at them, and also consent agenda. Very nice sales tax report continuing to go up this year. $113,158.21 for, or half cent, sales tax. And that is up $15,000 over last year. Also, capital improvement, sales tax is $56,579.13. And then in the collector's report, $71,027. And municipal court report, $3,559. Cemetery, park, street economic development, and animal control, business officer report. Entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? And due to the fact that you've just got your bills, if you have a question, call Mr. Walden tomorrow. He will talk to you until cows come home about those bills. And the other thing is, I had it brought to my attention about, on the bills that were with you, which was some payroll stuff, but there was a check written out of the electric department to the airport board just to let you know, the people, when they're giving us our grant money, put it in the wrong account, and we always have to transfer that out. So you may see one for $179,000, or $160,000, or whatever, but that's what happens, and that's the reason that that's like that.
And that is grant money?
That's grant money, yes.
Do I hear you?
Yep.
I hope I have that straightened out. I did contact him about trying to get that, fill that pay for to be taken care of.
Very good.
The only question I have is to answer.
So, no further questions, call for the vote. Alden Jacomelli.
Yes.
Alden Whitaker.
Yes.
Alden Powell.
Yes.
Alden Nash.
Yes.
Okay. Next items, unfinished business. And that is the cleanup. 818 Seventeen East Gibbs. City Administrator, Mr. Walden.
Ask for nuisance officer, Cherry Brown, if he could give us an update on the status of that since our last meeting.
Speak up, Mr. Brown.
Over this afternoon, since the last meeting, I, there's no noticeable changes in the progress there. I was unable to get a hold of Mr. Cook by telephone. When I tried to call, I think the phone was out of service. I got a strange message, no voice mail. But as far as progress goes, nothing's changed since last meeting.
Based upon that, Mr. Mayor, it's my recommendation that we proceed to take the most appropriate bid for cleanup.
Okay. So at this time, Mr. Walden, present those bids to us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman, we have bids from two different contractors, and the lowest bid was from Paul Camden Escavating for $1,245. That bid is still in effect, and we have funds budgeted in this fiscal year to cover this expense if the fiscal year ends before we were to get the money back.
Make a motion, we accept the bid from Paul Camden Escavating for $1,245.
Just for the record, would you give the bid that was highest on that? Do you have that?
Sure. The other bids were from Smith Construction. He had one bid for $1,195. That was without filter. And then his bid with filter was for $1,320.
Okay.
So Camden's bid included filter for the $1,245.
Any other questions or comments concerning the bids?
I have a question. I thought we were working with this guy, and I thought he was starting to remove it. And did we give him a time that he had to have it all finished? Or is he understanding that, how many days was he allowed to be given? Do you know, Jared?
I guess it depends on which time. We've been dealing with this property for, I've been dealing with it since I took the job three years ago. And I know Mr. has been dealt with it before that. At our last hearing that we had, I don't remember the timeline exactly on that. I don't know if there was a timeline. And City Attorney will have to maybe answer that question, ask the specifics of that.
What we agreed upon was that if he continued to make progress, that we would have proceeded with the bid. But he's not made more progress. He stopped. And there's no way to communicate with him at this point.
Any further questions?
Well, there's one question. He did do some cleanup. Would that be deducted from his, from bill to cleaning up with the guy who was in charge of full mouth? Mr. Cook called me and said he was working on holes and something without, trying to get it out.
The problem is, he's quit, and he's taken years to deal with it.
Okay. We have a motion by Alden Powell. Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Yes. Alden Jacomelli.
Yes.
Alden Nash.
Yes.
Alden Whitaker. All right, reports, city officials, boards, and committees. Folks, I've got, excuse me. Take a look for it. Thank you. Who wants to give the planning and zoning report?
I will. Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, the Planning and Zoning Commission met this evening with regard to a public hearing on conditional use permit for 1600 Dos Road owned by River Way's Pregnancy Resource Center. There was no negative comment therein, and the board or commission voted unanimously to authorize the conditional use permit for River Way's Pregnancy Resource Center. There is, of course, a conditional use, and therefore, if it's ever not used for the purpose set forth in River Way's Pregnancy Resource Center, it would revert back to a residential use. And it'd be my recommendation to the board that they consider doing the same and issue the conditional use permit.
Make motion, we approve the conditional permit.
Second. Motion, second. Hearing done. Call for the vote. Alden Powell.
Yes, sir.
Alden Nash.
Yes.
Alden Jacomelli.
Yes.
Alden Whitaker.
Yes.
On behalf of the River Way's Planning, but on behalf of the Crisis Center, do thank you for that. We have to give our property to another 501(c)(3), and that works out perfect for them. Sometimes it works out even good. City administrators report. Mr. Walden.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman, this afternoon, we opened bids for the McArthur Waterline project, and our engineering firm is reviewing the bids for compliance with the bid specs. We had nine bids submitted for that project, so it's competitive, and we expect to have a recommendation consideration at your next meeting, April 7th. We've received information from DNR on our sewer permit, and we'll need to have an engineering assessment done on our sewer plant to meet lower requirements on some of the aspects of that plant. We're also wanting to factor in our capacity, our current capacity needs, as well as anticipated growth for the future. So as we get that information and have that engineering assessment done, we'll include those plans as part of next year's budget consideration for you to look at. And it may be more than what we can do in one year, but we're going to try to schedule a meeting with folks from DNR just to make sure we're on the same page as what we need to do here. The mayor's also received a request from the Salem Housing Authority regarding the city and their electrical infrastructure there on site, and so we're looking at their circuit there, and I'll probably be involved for the city to assume some responsibility for that, including cost and the corresponding rate adjustment justifying that additional expense. As we get that engineering information together, we'll have that back to you in the form of a proposal or a recommendation for you to consider. And then also, I think Alderman Nash for reminding me about the animal shelter. That's a similar situation where we have a proposal from him for contract services, and with them moving to their new facility expected in the next few months, we'll need to make some decision on what we do for our needs there. And Jared, Animal Control Officer, Brown's been getting some additional information, and we hope to have that to you in the near future. And also, as a point of information before, your next Alderman meeting, the Chamber and KSMO and Salem News be hosting the Business Expo. That'd be the first Saturday in April, April 5th, from 9 to noon. And it's being held at the Upper Elementary School this year with all the construction going on at the high school. That's a change of venue for that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
What was the first thing you brought up?
The bids on the McArthur Waterline project.
And we had seven of those bids.
Nine.
Any questions, Mr. Walden?
I do have a question like this, I'm next on here, and I don't know who I'm supposed to direct this to. We had our last meeting, we talked about the city electric reserve and our city.
That's on the agenda for later on. Okay. No further questions? Give my few items. I received a letter, again, from HomeServe from Norwalk, Connecticut, and they will be sending this out to the residents of town, wanting them to buy insurance for their water lines, sewer lines, from where the city no longer takes care, or where it, we go five foot inside the city property to the water meter, and we, that's crap four, we go into it, and also to the clean out, if you have a clean out there in your yard. From there on, that is up to the homeowner. And they will sell insurance, and I imagine they're probably trying to get a little more business because there's many people having water leaks and frozen water lines here in the last few months. So anyway, just to let you know that the city has no opinion on this, and we do not say yes or no to do it, but I will tell you, I'm not supplying insurance for any. To remind everybody that the electronic entire recycling will be held October the 18th this year. As always, bring the items to the Third Street and Grand parking lot where the recycling is, they take care of that. And anyway, there'll probably be a low charge on some monitors as the electronic area, and the tires will have some charge as well. Last Thursday at MRPC, the Workforce Development gave reports about the eight, to the eight counties, and about the eight counties in the Marybank region, and they deal with unemployment. Workforce Development does. And just a little bit of a note, Dick County had dropped to 5.9%, and that's down 1.3% from last year. Bottom line is, most, I, well, only one county, and they stayed the same, and I believe that was Phelps, but everybody else was, was down, which was good.
Excuse me, could you give me that figure?
Okay, figure, we were, we're down to 5.9%, and we were 1.3% higher last year. And Alderman Powell, I just want to remind you that, hope you're not doing anything, not going out of town Sunday, next Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, because as president of the board, you will be acting mayor during that period of time.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to Washington DC to have fun with people from EPA, Park Service, and other places of interest. And we are visiting them, and with NATO organization, at the MRPC. So just want everyone to know about that. Any questions? Hearing done. I will continue on. New and miscellaneous business, spring cleanup. Waste corporation usually tells us, when would you like to have it? And we give them the dates. And so, this time, of course, in the spring, we have two weeks, and it will be the week of April the 28th, and the week of May the 5th. And also, that first Saturday in May, which, that is, no. That's why I screwed up. That's got, that's my own calendar. Remind me to pitch that calendar someday. May the 3rd is going to, will be the community wide yard sale date. So anyway, but also, I guess we need to vote on that spring cleanup. So entertain a motion for the spring cleanup.
Make a motion. Do a brief spring cleanup, April 28th, if you can.
Same.
Motion, second. Hearing done. Call for the vote. Alden Jacomelli.
Yes.
Alden Powell.
Yes, sir.
Alden Whitaker.
Yes.
Alden Nash.
Yes.
Very good. Spring cleanup. Now then, as you started to mention a while ago, Mr. Nash, we have it on the agenda concerning the savings, a savings policy for the electric reserve.
Well, at our last meeting, I asked what we had left in our electric reserve. We budgeted $200,000 for this year, and we discussed, and the city clerk recommended that the Alderman put their heads together and set a policy for saving this money so we would have it at the end of the year, just going to wait and see if money left or whatever. My opinion is, we need to monthly put something back. So at the end of the year, we will have what we budgeted for this year for our city electric reserve fund. I have this opinion of the other Alderman, and I got suggestions on how much to put away and.
Monthly? Mary, what do you suggest?
Well, I would suggest not only the electric, I would also do water and sewer. But I have gone out and gotten some information from other cities across the state, what they do. And if you don't mind, I'll hand that out. Some recommend a certain percentage of your, of your budgeted expenses. A majority looks like anywhere from 15 to 25% a year. There's minimum and maximums in here, what they do. If you go over the maximum, then remove the money. There's even some policies in here. Somebody, some of them just answered my email, some of them sent their policies of what they do. There's quite a few in here. It's just something that you're going to have to decide within your means, within the means to do it. I think two policies might be in here. One city's, if you're just starting out new, it's, you know, 5 to 10%. Some of them, this one also has three months annual budget expenses, you know, should be in there. Not to transfer that every year, she said that's what they want in there at any time. If you go in the policy to allow during hard times to remove some of that money out to be used in the day-to-day operations, you know, if you want to leave it, leave it. It's just something you're going to have to think about. This first one's from Perryville, they do 25%. This one's from Grand Valley, it's 25% of the year. Moberly's 15 to 25%.
Did they mention when they do that pay or the transfer?
No, I think it's.
At the end of the fiscal year?
It's just based on, some of them have passed resolutions for their policy to accept it, and then sometime during that year they do. It's not just upfront. You know.
One of the problems that we seem to have is we budget this money every year, and we have for several years, but for one reason or another, up till this past year, we haven't been able to, or haven't put anything in it to get us to where we need to be.
One of those years is because the revenues were over budgeted. But then this one is, I believe they've, they've given you a list of what they have done each year, anywhere from 15% up to 22.7% of your budget.
And these, these cities are putting that back each month?
No, each year. Well, not so much each year, it's just that that's what their policy is to have in there, basically, and not go under that. To have three months worth, let's say, have three months worth of operating expenses in there to use in an emergency or, or plan save. So if we had a $300,000 budget, divide it by 12, multiply it times three, and that's what you would want to have your maximum in there. It's not every year you would put that in, it's just that you want this set amount in
What, the question I'm trying to get to my head is, if we put, we budget $200,000, and this is included in the $11 billion budget, whatever, you know, $200,000 of it is going to be electric reserve. And we get, our electric bills goes out every month. I, I think it'd be simple to take $200,000 and divide it by 12, and put a twelfth of that $200,000 in the bank every month, and then your last month before your new budget come out, you would have your $200,000 there, and wouldn't be, have a chance on spending it somewhere else accidentally. And I would like to also put in that, and my suggestion is, anyway, the only way that money could be removed from the budget would be on the approval of the Alderman.
Of course, that would be in the resolution too, that you would set up the policy, of course, if you go, if you go down below that, a certain dollar amount.
So we could take.
But, and I, and I totally understand where you're coming from, and that would be great if, you know, if we could do that every month. But you never know when something happens, and you're going to have to spend more than what you budgeted, or your revenues aren't as much as what you came in, so you're not going to have that. You may have it to put in, but then you've still got expenditures going on here, and you don't have enough beyond that to cover your expenses. So how would you suggest you take care of that?
Well, I think we do a good tight budget, and we say this money ain't going nowhere but there.
Would be easier if it was going back to work.
That would probably be better, you know, to look each quarter.
Four times a year, so.
Four times a year, 12 times a year, which would be simpler, but we need somehow, you know, guarantee that we're going to have that money in reserve. We don't know how much overtime we're going to pay, so, you know, we possibly work it, and I think this budget should be wrapped up to where we, but no, pretty close.
There's some still, some pretty big projects still out there that haven't been done.
It seems like, if it ain't, we run short, we always take it out of the electric reserve. We've got good sewer and water reserve, everybody.
Well, if you have listened to your auditor every year, the sewer operates in the hole every year because of the depreciation. So you need to raise, you know, you need to look at that. We do have money set aside, but I think that needs to go into the DNR. I need to read that last, I can't remember what it's called, 99, what was that, Mayor, that we got for the sewer treatment plan in front of us? Where the money was, the sales tax was passed for seven years.
Right.
And sunsetted.
Yes.
And there's money there, but I think according to that, that agreement, there's so much money that's supposed to be put in.
Okay.
To the sewer DNR, along with that other one, one we're supposed to be putting 29 that we had years ago.
We put in 29, yeah, we put in 29,000. The money that was left over out of that bond issue, or that sales tax that sunsetted, that money has to be used strictly for sewer projects. They can't use it for anything else.
But it's supposed to be, it's just in a sewer, it's in the sewer CD right now, but I think according to that agreement, it's supposed to go into a DNR. So it's something I'm going to have to look at, and maybe have to have your help, Mr. C. Underst.
Maybe with the information you've given us tonight, maybe we should set up a workshop and just talk just about how we're going to handle this, so we all know what we're going on, and how much we've got, and when it's going to be there. You guys, I got any thinking?
I think that if we were brought information, possibly by the next meeting, of doing it by the month versus doing it by the quarter, and look at the money figure that we're talking about, and we'll just have to rely on the people that are working for us, which one they think they can handle the best.
But we need to come to a conclusion, right?
Yeah, I agree.
I guess that's enough on that? Want to move something up?
Make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Are you wanting to set up a workshop between now and then, or just?
It would depend on the other Alderman. This is going to be a slow-moving thing.
I think it needs to be done before we start the budget for next year, though.
Yes, you need to have the policy in effect. That's definitely.
I, I probably agree.
Okay, well, let's set up, let's go ahead and set up a workshop, then, with the city administrator, whoever else is involved in it, and get this nailed.
Maybe we could do it while you're acting mayor. How about ten apples? You already got a decision.
That's fine, let's go.
All right. Amen. Very good.
Do we want to go ahead and try to set up a time to do that?
Be fine with me.
If we pulled out some dates, or contact in. Okay. We'll do that. Sounds good. Try to get, sounds fine.
Okay.
Okay. You probably don't have anything else to do anyway. That's all I have. My other, I want to motion to go as a vote, go into closed session.
Second. The contracts. Have a motion. And second, after the vote, Alderman Whittaker?
Yes.
Alderman Jock Mally?
Yes.
Alderman Nash?
Yes.
Alderman Powell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go into closed session for contracts.
Yeah, I thought it was.